I'm going to call the meeting to order, please. If you can, everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alrighty, we have a board member online, so we need to do a roll call, please.
Wendy Brotherland, here.
Kristen Dubois, here.
Dave Gilman is absent, Danny Creed, Seacree is absent, Dan Holman, here. Noah Easter is absent, Leslie Marco, here. Patricia Clark, here. Chad White, here. Shawn Roderick, here. Brian Tarbach, here. David Twitchell, here. And student reps Kate Parker, and Luke Tinkum.
Alright, we will move along. Next up is additions to the agenda by the board superintendent. I don't think anyone has any, so, perfect. Citizens comments, I didn't see if anyone signed up. Is there anyone online who would like to comment tonight? Please place your hand or let Diane know if you'd like to comment. We'll wait a minute. Alright, we're all set, I'm getting the thumbs up. We do not have anyone who wants to comment online. Next, we have reports. First up, we have celebrations. Do you have anything, like, oh, Mr. Tarbach has a celebration.
I just heard that girls soccer team just won a state tournament on Saturday. Want to celebrate that, that's pretty cool. That's all I have really, though.
Yeah, I know, it's really cool.
Excited about it, looking forward to seeing them play Coney on Monday. Hope everybody's here.
Thank you for sharing. Any others, step one up.
There we go. Jeanette Jacobs, Wayne Elementary Principal. So, at the middle of the month, we'll be starting our literacy program. We started this last year, we put a call out to community volunteers. And we have increased our volunteers that are going to be joining us this fall. And it's a real tribute to the Wayne community. They're very involved and we're appreciative of all their support. So, we're looking forward to starting that back up and having community members in school.
That's great. Anyone else? Yes, step one up.
I'm Sarah Morrell from the Health Center, but I'm here to read something that Michelle La Forge asked me to share because she went homesick. So, these are her one-sentence celebrations for both middle school and high school. At the middle school, middle school boys and girls cross-country teams won the league championship for the second straight year. Middle school raised over $2,000 for the food pantry as part of Make a Difference Week, which I think at the middle school was last week. Attendance and absence lists have been shorter than ever, despite the largest student populations ever, at least in Michelle's eight years. Mrs. Simpson's 3G class got all nines and tens on their Unit 2 bucket drumming final. 10 students at the middle school are auditioning for the MMEA District 3, 7th, and 8th Honors Festival. Seven students have been nominated for the MMEA District 3 6th Grade Honors Festival. And over 200 students participated in the mock election. 12 students took on the role of ballot clerk. Those are the middle school one-sentence celebrations from Michelle. And then at the high school, yay, girls soccer, go Bears! And they play Coney on Saturday at 11:00. And then, high school did NWA through testing. It's complete and they met the state requirements for participation. And then the seniors have been working on submitting college applications. Hooray!
Thank you so much for sharing those. Mr. Tarbach?
Quick questions, bucket drumming, what it sounds like, like, is it a bucket with sticks?
Yes, sir.
They use the five-gallon buckets?
I'm just wondering if they could do a presentation for us on that, it would be pretty good. Just put it out there.
They could come to Coney at 11 o'clock on Saturday, which is what other schools also do.
It's a great.
Pickle buckets and drums.
Pretty cool.
Do we have any others, but we have a lot of great ones. Alright, we will move along to any other reports. Do we, I don't think we have any students here. Oh, we do, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I had asked and no.
Hi, I'm Avery, I'm part of the Student Senate in the high school.
Thank you, Avery, for me.
I hope you guys are doing well. Just some, like, reports of what every committee has been doing. The Spirit Committee has just wrapped up a successful homecoming week. This includes the theme days that have helped boost our school spirit with student body participation, which was increasing each day. We also had a very energetic and well-planned pep rally that successfully prepared the student body for an exciting homecoming football game. The homecoming dance also went very well. We are currently working on winter carnival with hopes of having everything planned by January. In the Student Voice Committee, we have created a student bulletin board with everyone's name in the Student Senate. We have been working on creating the Student of the Month. The Student of the Month will be selected from a group of names recommended by teachers of students who have done something good. At the beginning of the year, we also had a club fair as well as weekly sports announcements and a weekly calendar. The Wellness Committee has been busy creating monthly bulletin boards near the Wellness Center to highlight different ways to prioritize mental health and wellbeing. Each month focuses on a new theme, offering tips and resources to support our school committee. We also launched an advisory challenge for our bear cape t-shirts. Students submitted their bear t-shirts designs and the student school will vote for their favorite. The winning designer and their entire advisory group will receive free bear cape t-shirts. The Outreach Committee has so far hosted a Halloween movie night for the community, which accepted canned goods and money donations for our food pantry. Currently, we are gathering food and hygiene items for the food pantry during Make a Difference Week. It has so far been very successful and productive. And then lastly, the Tech Committee has been working on a variety of tasks, ranging from the operation of the kiosk, which has been reactivated, the schedule extension, whose dates have been added in a myriad of sheets and similar forms, which is those for Make a Difference Week. Thank you.
Thank you so much, a lot of great things. Okay, no one, is there anyone here from the Staff Association? Here's some of the email, but just in case, anyone else under reports? Alright, we will, any, Kristen's not. Kristen, do you have any updates from Awesome Bear Society you want to share?
Hi, so, nothing new to report, but I did want to throw out there, it's repetitive, but they are always looking for volunteers from the community. I think a lot of times, it's the same faces, which is great, thank you to those same faces, but they're always in need of more volunteers. So, if anybody is interested, you can reach out to me or Kathy Tarbach, but probably me.
Alright, thank you, Kristen.
Yes.
Okay, subcommittee updates, facilities and transportation.
I have no prepared remarks, I was at the meeting and because I was about three minutes, maybe a minute late, I got nominated as the Chair of that subcommittee. And as a result, I didn't know I was also supposed to prepare all the documents for you guys, but we talked about an awful lot of things. What I'm hoping to be able to get done the next year is to address some of the things that have come up to the board. Specifically, there are these recurring things like, oh, we wish we could do some of the baseball field and why can't we do anything with the tennis court? And, you know, what about traffic and why do they cut the trees down? So, we need to do some work on communications, but it's also imperative that we look to the future, 10, 20 years out. There was a recent study that listed all the schools in Maine and we're kind of dead last on that list for funding. So, we have to think about what that means if we're going to try to self-fund these things. So, quite a lot to talk about, you know, and good survey of the properties. So, if we talk about moving structures around, that's a challenge. So, there's a lot going on in facilities and I will definitely have an amazing report for you the next time as the Chair. And let this be a warning to all of us in TV land as well that be on time for things.
Thank you, Mr. Tarbach. Policy Committee, that's there.
Yes.
You got Wendy, Wendy's going to give you up.
Speaking of facilities, we are going to be working on a policy, KF, and is the use of school facilities and the KF attachments. And Karen was amazing, she gave us a lot of research to really think about, really good questions about this policy. We are taking an extensive review of this policy and the related attachments using scenario-based discussions and reflective pre-work questions, which were amazing. It really got us thinking in the right direction. By testing the current policy in real-world situations, the committee identified significant gaps in policy language, including unclear guidance on employee use, a lack of priority systems among community groups, no distinction between occasional and ongoing facility use, and an absence of framework for balancing revenue opportunities with mission-aligned community access. So, this is all the buildings in our RSU and we have a lot of work to do. So, this isn't going to be an easy fix. It's going to be many months that we are going to meet. We're also going to bring in all the stakeholders. And Mandy has been a great guide for things like insurance. Shawn Drinkwater joined us as well. I learned something new. I thought the janitors had to be present to clean the floors in the buildings. That's not true, they have to be there because of the sprinkler system that if anything goes wrong, the box that has to be pre-programmed or programmed or turned off is really hard to do. So, there's a lot of things we have to think about when it comes to using our facilities for the community and sharing it with the community, the students, the parents, and the faculty. So, a lot of work ahead of us, but we've got a great group of people. We are ready to dig in and look at this closely.
Thank you so much, Wendy, that was a, sorry. Thank you, yeah, no, there's a lot of, a lot of work to do and a lot to think about, so, thanks for that update.
Any discussion about cellphone policy for board members?
That's on the list.
That's on the list, exactly.
Alright, next is communications. Yep, Kristen?
Hi, again. So, we nailed down the dates for when the next communication meetings are going to be, which Karen, I don't know if you have those in front of you, but we also did decide that they may end up being flexible, so maybe TBA for that one. We elected a Chair, which is myself. Brian, I was also a little late too, so, it happens. We also brainstormed and finalized some newsletter ideas. And I think kind of our main theme was educating the community on exactly what the board does and just really breaking it down into layman's terms so that everybody could understand it. We also kind of explored some ways to make those newsletters a little more eye-catching and easy to read. And lastly, we decided that our Chair is, our Board Chair, Shawn, is going to do a little newsletter himself to reach out and communicate. And I think, did that cover it all, Shawn, I think?
It does, it does.
Yeah?
Waiting for Noah to get back to me because I did send it to both of you, so, just a reminder.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
And also to add, and you might not know this, I was asked to do a once-a-week, three-to-five-minute radio interview on the highly-listened to Reed Field Radio Station. What, no, I thought it was once on, but I didn't read the fine print and I agreed to do it once a week. And I sent in my first one this week and I guess I got to listen between seven and eight to see how I did. And I'm going to get the link so I can ship, so it can be like a dual-purpose included newsletter because a lot of it's the same, so, you can get it in a couple of formats, but I did that. I, I'm learning. I wasn't sure if it was online yet or not, but, yep, so I did do that and so trying to come up with new ways to get stuff out there. Alright, communications and then personnel, just that. David, are you our, you're the spokesperson for the Personnel Committee?
Oh, how nice. Should take more notes.
Oh, I didn't know.
I was late too. It was good. We heard about how for, and I can be corrected by those that were there on time, how we, the middle school principal process is moving along very well and on schedule, on time, and we should be, we're expecting some good results shortly. And then we also have changes as far as teachers, particularly caught my attention in Wayne, and things are resolving there too, in a nice way. Although, we now need a librarian for all the elementary schools and that's been posted. So, if anybody knows a librarian that's willing to take that on, it's an important part for the student. And we talked about a number of other ways that we're working to make the administration both effective and more open so that on all levels, the school teams and the community will be aware of how hard we're working to make things go well. Anything I missed?
The Superintendent search, the committee was chosen at the Personnel Committee. Some of you have been told you're on it and then I will be reaching out to the rest of the folks who did want to be on it and you'll find out by tomorrow if you were chosen. And that timeline will keep moving as the board voted on and things are going in the timely fashion. So, those are all the subcommittees. But next, we're going to talk about the MSMA Fall Conference. There were a number of board members who attended that and staff. I guess we'll start with myself. And we, we attended the, I attended the Chair training along with Leslie, she attended, and it was very interesting. There was probably, I don't know, 30, 40 other chairs there, vice-chairs from around the state. And I think the, learned some new, you know, learned some things, but also learned, I guess probably the most thing I walked away with is sometimes we think that, or I think, I don't want to speak for anyone else, like, things are fault, like, oh, man, our, our board meetings, you know, have been a little rough or things have not always gone the best. And then you hear stories from other people in the room and they're like, you guys got it pretty good if that's how your board, your staff, and your superintendent work together. And it's like, it reminded me how good we have it here. There might have been some, you know, it's not always perfect, but it really reminded me of that. It's, we really do, we have a great staff, we have a wonderful board and I feel fortunate as Chair to be a part of it. And, yeah, there's some new, you know, some different things. Try to, gee, gee, I had it in my head, I just lost it. Oh, you know, trying to get more, encourage the board to be, you know, engaged at meetings. I know folks do a good job here, but try to get board members to talk once a meeting so you get everyone's input because some people, you know, I probably could talk all night if I needed to and some people don't want to talk. Try to find ways where people are best used on the board, so, I've kind of been thinking about that a little bit. So, all right, Leslie, add.
I, I think it would be similar to that, when you just hear how other districts have different practices that might still have been a little different than ours. It's not always going to be the same everywhere and what works for every area isn't going to be the same. At the end of the day, sometimes the very composition of the very specific people that are in play is a part of the direction that that takes, whether it's something that is super formal or something that accepts it to be slightly less formal, that allows for more input or a more conversational format too. So, I think there was conversation around that there isn't, there are some facets of things that should definitely not be a part of certain things and, and then conversation where there's lots of flexibility. And I think that we walk away definitely going, we probably could do something with some of these things, but I don't think it means that there's a complete overhaul to what we do at all.
Yeah, that's good. So, I will turn it over to the other folks who went to the full-day conference and I think people have things to say.
I'll go next. I went to Ask Pender and Pender Macon is their seven-year Commissioner of Education. And the first thing they spoke about were, was about taking a look at the funding formula, which is an ongoing thing, I think they've been doing that for quite a while now. And one thing they did bring up, a lot of people in the audience, was the formula's not keeping up with inflation for everybody either. So, they have a lot, I think, of work to do on that. We have been gaining educators in the state of Maine, 1,000 more educators since 2018. Maine DOE has started and maintained 300 revolving education funds in seven years. As of the meeting with Pender, Maine is still receiving federal funds. Lawsuits have kept the money coming to Maine and courts are upholding the funding for public schools. Workforce development through CATC, they have 10,000 Maine students involved, plus extended learning experiences and pre-apprenticeship positions, which I thought was really cool. Maine is expanding early learning, which we also read about in Ryan's report, the pre-K program. And they're very proud of that and they're excited about the equity, equitable access it will bring and that pre-K programs will bring down the cost in education and will identify children earlier. There are bus driver shortages statewide. There is also a shortage of occupational therapy and physical therapy, people, physical therapists in Maine schools. And then Pender ended with, "Education is the most important work for any society." And she was thankful for the work school boards are doing for all our kids. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank Mr. Holman?
Yeah. I want to talk about, I don't know, Jones and the keynote, how are we to be keynote speaker Thursday? I'm not sure if he's listening. But his superintendent for a long while had worked, you know, all the different jobs in the school system, including counselor. He's now kind of on the road doing presentations because he's really good. And I was struck, we actually had him as a professional day thing two years ago? And it took a while and I went back and went in line to watch it. I was impressed because he was so much about building the connections and, and the importance of that. And having each interaction be what you'd want if it was the only thing they're going to remember you by and you never quite know which one that will be. He also made a point, he emphasized this, that how people make judgments and assumptions about schools based not on being the schools, but by their experience from maybe decades before. And their assumptions and how it is our job, and he was speaking clearly to a room of superintendents and board members, to like, to get past that and how to do that. He showed in his clips more so, him with all the different kids and talking about his board members. And he also got this in the different conference, different workshops, talking to superintendents and other board members. He talked about how embedded they were in the school. He showed the pictures there in the classrooms, but talking about board members as well as a learning community together, and I was really struck by that. I really took from it his message that we are a learning, we, board members, administrators, teachers, a learning community, and they all need to be working together, listening, and all being in the schools. And I thought, I was really inspired by that.
Okay, I went to alternative education for elementary school students. And usually, it is for high school students, for, sometimes for middle school. But this was Principal Shelley Moody and she's with the Atwood Primary School in RSU 18. And the Dylan Clark, who's the principal at Belgrade Central School, also RSU 18. And the other presenter was Greg Hat and he seems to be a phenomenal ed tech at Belgrade Central. He specializes in individualized alternative enrichment plans. This isn't for children who have an IEP. This is for children who may be in Tier 2. They may need extra support in the classroom. And we know that we have more of them now since after COVID. And so, it's children who may have gone through some trauma or in some kind of an event that is really bothering them and they can't get their attention or focus in the classroom. So, they work with them outside the classroom as well as inside. And it's really important to have the ed tech be in tune with the kids. Not, I don't think every person could do this because he sees all these kids and it's, it's a rotating number of kids because some kids sort of graduate out and then other kids come in. But it's from K through 5, grade 5. And the kids gave their stories on, on the, on these short little vignettes. And it was like, they love fly fishing, you know, with Mr. Hat. And they want to be out in the garden all the time. And their grades, if they have grades, or their, their work is getting so much better because they have this attention of somebody will listen to them. And I thought it was fascinating. And I do have the PowerPoint, they just sent it to me, which I could send to somebody if you're interested.
Could be great, I like it.
You like it, okay. And it helps with attendance too, because they want to come to school. And my last sentence is, "All it takes for a child in distress to feel connected is a relationship to an adult." Anyway, I liked it.
Yeah, no, I think that's great, thanks, Pat.
Could you send that to me too, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Karen or Wendy, I think you both went, want to share anything?
Yeah, so I went to several sessions. The keynote also, as Dan explained, was, was phenomenal. Went to some sessions on board relations with community, board relations with the superintendent. I went to a session on negotiations. I went to a session on looking at salary scales. So, there were several different sessions, all very valuable and helpful. looking at salary scales, um, so I, there were several different sessions, all very valuable and helpful.
Um, same. I went to a lot of different sessions. I think one of the ones that, um, I appreciated most this time around was, um, one on negotiations. Um, it's, um, one of those, um, things that we have to do usually. Every year we negotiate with one group, um, every now and then we get by a year where we don't, but, um, usually we have to negotiate with one group every year and sometimes that can be contentious. And so I really appreciated some of the, um, information that they had on ways to not make it an us versus them scenario, which, um, you know, I think is critical. I think, you know, having people on both sides realize that we are all, um, here for the same goal at the end of the day. And so I found that one to be extremely helpful and hopefully we can put it into practice for this year's negotiations.
Look forward to that. All right, well, thank you everyone for sharing kinda and sending around if you have info, you know, that's great. Um, I'd encourage folks, I'm hoping to get to go to the full conference next year. Uh, but, uh, the stuff that MSMA puts out is really good. They also have emails they send out, I think it's weekly with like videos and I've started watching them and it's interesting. It's kind of exciting to share what's going on in public education. I would actually send them a suggestion, they should, you know, kind of do a marketing campaign on social media with those videos, not just the emails and they were interested in that. I mean, I know everything costs money, but I think some of the stuff is really great and needs to get out there more, so.
I agree and I didn't win anything this year.
All right, so next we will move along to the action items. First up is approval of minutes from the October first, twenty twenty-five board.
I moved that we approved the minutes from the October first, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Uh, movement second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Wendy, yes. Kristen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
All right, unanimous, approval of minutes from the ten fifteen twenty-five.
I've moved to approve the minutes from ten fifteen twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in second and, uh, discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for a roll call vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Noah? I'm sorry, Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
And Luke?
All right, next up is acceptance of resignations.
I moved to accept the resignations of Tony Allman, high school math interventionist and Katie Van Houten, grade two from Wayne Elementary School.
Second.
All right, moved in second, any discussion? Um, so I think if I understand correctly, the second grade position is filled or going to be filled.
So I'm not gonna put you on this spot, Jeanette, but would you mind giving an update on, um, the transfers that are happening at Wayne?
It's good to have that.
So, uh, the Wayne, the transition plan that we put, uh, in place for Wayne is that we will actually be shifting, um, some of our current staff. So we're gonna move our first grade teacher, uh, into that second grade position. We're very fortunate that she already knows those students and can support them quite well and she'll stay in that role. And then, uh, we opened up that first grade position and we will, um, be moving Heather Chalmers into the first grade position and Heather's currently our, uh, elementary librarian. And so, uh, we're excited to, to make those moves and, and, um, have a complete staff.
Very excited, thank you so much. Um, and then the high school position's being advertised.
Correct, the high school position and we have the library, um, position at the elementary also advertised.
All right, move in second or call for a roll call vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
All right, next up is ratification of new hire, fourth grade teacher, Manchester Elementary School.
So I move to accept ratification of new hire, fourth grade teacher, Manchester Elementary School, Christina Spila.
Second.
All right, moved in seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Uh, unanimous, uh, next up, uh, acceptance of, uh, donations.
I move that we accept the donations, very generous donations, thank you.
Second.
Yep, all right. Moved in second and, yeah, very generous donations and, uh, all to the, you know, food pantry, which is, uh, very nice to see. Um, I also saw, I was here, wow, whatever day the teachers, uh, parent teacher conferences were to help provide meals for the PTO and it was awesome to see the entire stage covered with donations from the families. I know on top of the money, but the stage was filled and I know there's a lot of donations coming in from the high school and, uh, it's really cool because I don't need to get into it, but I think it's important now more than ever that people support their local food pantries. Tarbuck?
Yeah, just, just quickly, that, Mariana Cook Education Foundation, I'm on that board. Uh, that's just a pass through, so folks who wanna donate electronically can do, or digitally, I guess, can do that. And just so folks know, oftentimes there's a fee to, uh, to get charged for that donation. So if you wanna donate a hundred bucks and we gotta pay a credit card processor or something, two percent or whatever, MEF eats that amount, so if somebody donates a hundred dollars, the whole hundred dollars goes and MEF pays the fee. So, uh, if folks do wanna get interested in making routine donations, that's fine too, it's well managed and, um, it's just a nice thing to be able to do that, started back in COVID, five years ago.
And people can find that, where to donate?
That's a great question, it should be prominently displayed on the, uh, website, some, somewhere.
Yeah, if you go to the RSU thirty-eight website and go, um, search the food pantry, there's a page for it and there's multiple ways to donate.
Perfect. Manny, can I?
Sure.
Great, there's a poster.
Can Venmo work for that? There's, there's no fee for the recipient on that?
Yeah, I know.
So.
It's a good question.
So I'm not sure through MEF if Venmo works or not, I could check with, um, Mr. Wilson to see if it does. Um, but we did, it's through PayPal, okay? Um, we did recently, um, we are, um, looking into a new organization to do campaign sort of fundraising and I did set up one campaign, which was the food pantry, to, um, see how this works and how it goes, to see if we can use it moving forward for other, you know, sports, um, programs and things like that. And that allows for Venmo, PayPal, um, I think Facebook Pay might have been one option. You could do it with your own bank account, like you could go in and put your checking account information and you could also do, um, recurring payments. The only difference between doing it through, um, Give Butter, which is the organization that we're looking at, the only difference between that and MEF is MEF provides a five oh one C three status, um, information if you want that for tax purposes. So, um, you know, if somebody is donating a large amount and wants that five oh one C three status, I would still recommend you go through MEF.
Thank you, that's all great information. Um, we will call for a roll call vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Luke?
All right, next up we have consideration of overnight field trip for varsity basketball.
I move that we, um, consider and approve overnight field trip for varsity basketball.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, I think it's, I mean, I read the information, I think it's pretty straightforward what they're looking to do, so, um, any discussion? Mr. Tarbuck?
Just the one thought I had on that initial page where the form for everybody to fill out, there's a few things that could be integrated into that form, maybe make it a little easier so that in certain travel, the board has to step in and other travel, maybe they don't wanna be handy if somebody saw that. So they say, oh, yeah, this definitely has to go to the board and this definitely does not. So, for example, there's foreign travel, I thought that was interesting, New Hampshire, foreign, I don't know, could be.
This is Massachusetts.
I'm guessing Massachusetts, definitely, but, um, you know, I figure Canada or whatever, those are what's implied there. But, um, anyway, that was the only suggestion I had, make it a little easier on us too. So if we had a matrix to say this is what we need to approve and what we don't, it's all in the policy if you read through it, just make it maybe a little easier for most, that's all, otherwise small favor.
Yeah, I know, this is, uh, these type of things are great. Anytime, as a teacher, I said ahead at U of M, Dr. Frederick said, anytime we can get the kids over the bridge and you sharing's a good thing, so I always remember that from college. Uh, so on that note, we'll call for a roll call vote.
Okay, Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, okay, next we have consideration of Capitol Area Technical Center CATC Cooperative Agreement. Get a motion to start this.
I moved that we approved the CATC Cooperative Agreement as presented in the board comments.
Second.
All right, moved in second it, uh, Dr. Smith, do you wanna explain if there's any changes from the past or anything noticeable or?
I think it's pretty standard from what the board approves every year with our agreement. Um, Brian Tarbuck is the representative, um, that attended, uh, the meeting along with me. Um, we got an update, um, regarding, um, some initiatives that they're trying with CATC to do like exploratory in grades nine and ten, um, so there was a lot of discussion around that. There was also discussion around, um, they started a new process last year for, um, students to have to do like an actual application process. Um, and so there were some enrollments that were down in CATC, so that was brought up was if, um, they thought that that might be a deterrent, um, having to complete the application. So again, there was some discussion around that.
Uh, yeah, just, this is a perfunctory thing that we do every year. Uh, I don't think there was any school that was present that was in opposition. Um, and that's a, that's a fair synopsis. Anybody who's not been to CATC in a while really owes it to themselves to go. There is a Skills, Skills USA competition coming up or night that they have at CATC. We'll make sure that everybody's aware of that because it's just a really cool event where you see, uh, you see people who are really, really clever and good at things, like here's a dented fender, I'm gonna fix it in like the next hour. Like it would take me six years to do it, just really pretty cool to see all the stuff they have going on there. And there is good enrollment and, um, everybody needs a plumber, everybody needs an electrician and Mariana Cook's turned out a whole bunch of kids through that program, which is really good, good for the community, so.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh, great, I follow their Facebook page on social media. They're doing a good job, they have kids talk about how CATC makes a difference then and every time I see that, it's, it's pretty cool, so. All right, on that note, we will, uh, call for a roll call vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
All right, unanimous, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.